Okay, everybody, welcome. Thank you for signing on. We have about 175 people watching our virtual town hall meeting about the Health and Safety Plan Phase reopening for COVID-19 pandemic. I do want to thank everyone for logging on, and I want to thank all of the different parents and community members who sent their questions in advance. A plan tonight is to go over our reopening plan, and then I have a document with the various questions that were asked over the last several days with the answers. We'll go through that, and then we will address the questions that come in on YouTube and the email, cvenna@indians.k12.pad.us. We're here with our administrative team in the school boardroom, and hopefully we'll be able to answer all of your concerns and questions. And a reminder that we ask all parents to complete the survey that is available as a link on our website for returning to school by choosing one of the options. We ask that you have that completed by August 3rd. Right now, we have about 500 responses on that survey, and the numbers are 70% of those responses are a full return, and 30% are leaning towards, or have chosen, I should say, doing the online portion for the first month of school. So with that being said, I will start with a PowerPoint presentation. We'll go through this. This is kind of an overview with our Health and Safety Plan. We'll go over the list of questions and answers that I've compiled. Both of those documents will be available on our district website, and then I will respond to any other questions that have come in. If for some reason we miss responding to one of your questions, simply email me tomorrow if we miss it tonight, and we'll do our best to get you answers so you can make decisions on that survey. So, okay, first slide is basically title slide, and we're talking about going back to school on Monday, August 24th, which will be the first day of school as scheduled here at the district. Just want to keep in mind that our reopening plan is a fluid document. By that, we mean that it can change at any time depending upon what happens with the governor and the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the various guidance that we receive from the Department of Health and CDC. Our plan is put out there to reduce the level of risk, but we do want to, you know, make everyone aware that it does not completely eliminate risks and exposure. However, we feel that what we've put in place is the best we can do, and we will continue to monitor that and change the plan based on the ever-changing COVID updates as we receive them from state levels. We've broken up the plan into pretty much five areas: cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting, and ventilating; social distancing and safety protocols; student and staff health; other considerations for student and staff; and of course, instruction of our students. The first area is cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting, and ventilating. And on this slide, you can see some of the things that we've put in place. Obviously, our plan is to increase our social distancing and hygiene practices. We will be following the CDC's guidance for cleaning and disinfecting schools. Common areas or frequently touched surfaces will be cleaned and disinfected throughout the day. We asked our supervisor of buildings and grounds to come up with a schedule of protocols for our cleaning staff. Classrooms will be cleaned and disinfected in the evenings. The district did purchase, I believe, it was four air mister disinfecting machines to clean and sanitize our buildings daily. We are permitting students to have water bottles in school. Water fountains will be closed for use, and classrooms and common areas will be ventilated with additional circulation of outdoor air when possible. Social distancing and safety protocols. Let me just go back to make sure I didn't miss anything, okay? Social distancing and safety protocols. These are just general protocols. Face coverings will be required during the state mandate, which was implemented by Governor Wolf on July 3rd. When face coverings are no longer mandated, we will continue to increase the use of PPE, masks, gloves, face shields, which will be recommended, encouraged, and provided for those students who need them. Our schedules in the buildings will be as static as possible, and we will try to restrict interactions between groups of students as much as possible. As far as protocols for distancing student desks and seating, the goal would be to spread the desks out in the classrooms as much as possible and have them facing one way. We won't have desks aligned such that they are facing each other. We have procedures in place for breakfast and lunch. Basically, in a nutshell, in the middle high school, students who are eating breakfast will come into the building. Of course, they'll be masked. When they come into the building, if they want to eat breakfast, they will go to the cafeteria, eat breakfast. Students who do not eat breakfast will go immediately to homeroom. There will be no students walking the halls before homeroom or congregating in the hallways for lunch. We plan on splitting the cafeterias in half. Half will eat in the gymnasium, half will eat in the cafeteria, and that is at the middle high school. Of course, we will encourage, if the weather permits, students to eat outside when possible, and we'll make sure that when students are in line getting their food, they are masked and follow CDC guidelines with that as well. In the elementary school, our students will come in, they will get their breakfast and eat it in their classrooms. For lunches at the elementary school, we will be running one cafeteria period for each grade level. So, example, when it's second grades turn for lunch, they will go to the cafeteria. There will be no other classes in the cafeteria, and the second grade students will be split amongst the two sides in the elementary cafeteria to socially distance them. Of course, we will have postings of signs throughout the building. We will be restricting nonessential visitors and volunteers from entering our buildings. We will limit the sharing of materials among our students. We will be staggering the use of communal spaces and hallways, including recess. So we will still be having recess. Our elementary administrative staff will be coming up with the staggered schedule to allow for students to get outside and take some fresh air in. And we will be encouraging our classroom teachers, when possible, to do lessons outside, of course, weather permitting, and that will allow for more social distancing. As far as the cafeteria is concerned, some of the different protocols will be that meal condiments will be limited and provided to students on serving trays. Students will not be permitted to serve themselves. Staff will serve all meal components. Fruits and vegetable selection will be limited. Our staff will be utilizing individual containers or the to-go type containers as much as possible. Our student dining areas and cafeteria serving areas will be cleaned between lunch periods. As again I said earlier, breakfast and lunch will be served in the cafeterias and gymnasiums and classrooms, as I mentioned previously. We will have hand sanitizer protocol provided at stations within the cafeterias, and we'll be asking students to wash their hands before and after lunches. Parents and guardians will be encouraged to deposit funds into the CAF track via an online option to limit the number of money, the amount of money that's being handled in our cafeterias. Some of the protocols related to hygiene. All staff will be trained on healthy hygiene practices so they can teach that to the students. I believe our nursing department will be doing that. We will ensure that hand washing strategies include washing with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, especially after going to the restroom, before eating, and after blowing their nose, coughing, or sneezing. If soap and water are not available and hands are not visibly dirty, students can use alcohol-based hand sanitizers that contain at least 60% alcohol. We will be using CDC hand washing resources, and we will be posting various posters such as germs are everywhere and wash your hands throughout the cafeterias and restrooms and in high-traffic areas. As far as visitors and volunteers, we will be restricting them to our buildings. If they are required to come in, they must have a mask on when entering the building. We will not be approving educational trips at the beginning of the school year, and we will revisit that on a monthly basis. No outside individuals will be renting the facility under policy 707, which is our facility's use policy, and we will not be scheduling any large group activities such as assemblies or concerts. And of course, we will revisit all of those on a month-to-month basis. As I said, it is a fluid document. Other safety protocols and social distancing protocols. Again, elementary admin will develop a staggered recess schedule. Phys ed classes, they will be held outdoors as much as possible. Our music classes, we will socially distance those students as much as possible. We will be cleaning and disinfecting shared items between uses, especially in the areas where students are hands-on with equipment in the school. We will do our best to keep students' belongings separate from one another. We will allow students with clear and mesh backpacks to carry them throughout the day so they do not have to use their lockers. The both building principals are developing, to the best of their ability, one-way traffic patterns in the hallways, and that will be posted in the buildings. We will try to keep students in one location and limit their movement. We want to keep things as static as possible, and we will try to stagger our hallway movement when hallway movement is a necessity. With our transportation, parents have the option and are encouraged to transport their child to school. Buses will be disinfected before and after routes. Students will be having assigned seats on the buses. If they have to sit with somebody, obviously, they'll be masked, and they'll be masked the entire time they're on the bus. And in conversations with our bus contractor, we are asking that, you know, anytime there's an opportunity to have windows open to increase ventilation, that they do so. In regards to student and staff health and monitoring that, we're asking parents and guardians, they will have to do a symptom screening each morning before school. Children who have symptoms, fever, exposure to COVID should not be sent on the bus or to school by a parent. All district staff will perform a symptom screen on themselves prior to coming to work, and if they are ill, they will stay home. Students and staff should mask and proceed to the nurse immediately if they are symptomatic, and we will have an isolation area in the nurse's station for students who are symptomatic. Student and staff isolating and quarantining. Any staff member or student who exhibits symptoms of COVID-19 or a new history of exposure will be placed in isolation at an isolation location until transportation home is provided. While waiting for transportation, the student or staff will be required to wear a mask unless medically necessary. If students and staff's medical condition deteriorates, obviously, we would have to call 911 to transport to hospital setting. Students and staff will need to follow up with PCP for further evaluation and possible testing. If further medical attention is not sought, then the staff member or student must self-quarantine for 14 days and exhibit no symptoms of COVID-19 for three days without the use of medications. Returning to school. Any staff member or student who was recently isolated, quarantined, may return to the school setting when at least one of the following criteria are met. Testing is negative, and the PCP issues a return to school order. Staff or student has self-quarantine for 14 days and is symptom-free for the past three days without the use of medications. Staff or student has a positive COVID antibody test and is symptom-free for three days without the use of medications, and a PCP signed return to school order. What happens in case we have a confirmed COVID situation? First phone call would be to the Pennsylvania Department of Health, 1-877-PA-HEALTH. They will take the lead in walking us through step-by-step what our responsibilities and actions are. We will rely on them for instruction as far as closing classrooms, school buildings, or the entire district. I will immediately reach out to the Department of Health and make sure they are updated and follow their lead, and we will also rely on the Department of Health for contact tracing. The district will follow as far as Families' First Coronavirus Response Act. If a school employee asserts that he or she suffers from a medical condition that prevents them from wearing a face covering at work, the district will engage in what we call an interactive process to determine if a workplace accommodation needs to be made. Student face coverings. All students must wear a face covering that covers their nose and mouth inside the school and while outside when physical distancing is not feasible. Unless they have a medical or mental health condition or disability documented in accordance with Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act or IDEA, that precludes them the wearing of a face covering in school. Accommodations for such students should be made in partnership with the student's healthcare provider, school nurse, and IEP or 504 team. We will be looking to do face covering breaks throughout the day. Whenever we do so, students will have to be socially distanced at six feet, and we did purchase one washable face covering for all students. However, we encourage parents to go out and have face coverings for your children. In talking about the instructional piece, we will be using live, which is called synchronous, and offline asynchronous instruction. If you do it virtually, each student will be able to work with the support of their Shamokin area teachers to be successful. Students will have the opportunity to engage daily in high levels of rigor and relevance through a collaborative and personalized learning experience. IEP, GIEPs, and/or 504 plans are developed and implemented across all settings. Special education programming and related services will continue to be provided. All lessons will have a video, and will be available to students who cannot participate live, and students will have 24 hours to complete their assignments. Students will be able to attend live, real-time lessons with their teachers. Again, all lessons will be recorded and available to students who cannot participate live. Chromebooks will be available for students in need of a learning device. We will take daily attendance. All students will be assessed and graded in the same way, and the content and assignments will be the same for all students. So questions that came in regarding elementary-level students online. Elementary teachers will have to provide students with a schedule of login times for each subject area, including co-curricular times in order to join live. Middle high school students will be able to follow their normal schedule virtually. Breakfast and lunch will be available daily for virtual students for pickup at designated locations. Students will have the ability to speak virtually to teachers during live lessons, and of course, our teachers will be available through email, office phone, and virtual meetings. If you see the link there, if you click on that, that has some information regarding our virtual learning plan here at Shamokin Area. Dress code, that was a big question we received. What we will be doing for dress codes. Spirit days will be allowed every day for the first month of school, and we will reevaluate that monthly. Please understand, there is no sense that we are getting rid of the dress code. When things go back to normal, the full dress code will be in effect, so please understand that. We will relax it a bit by doing the spirit days, however, we're going to keep the bottoms as per the dress code at this time. When we talk about spirit days, the building principals will get information out about those on their Facebook pages, but right now, we're looking at doing purple and/or white tops or any Shamokin area top that could be any color, pretty much. It could be a gray, a black, a blue, if it has Shamokin area on it, that is permissible as well. A lot of questions came in about face coverings. Can they be solid colors? Can they have designs? Masks or face coverings, as long as they're school-appropriate and don't cause an educational distraction. Obviously, administration has the right task as student to change the mask if it is causing a distraction, but we're perfectly fine with having different colors and designs as long as they're appropriate for school on your mask, and we encourage families, if they want to go out and purchase those types of things for their children, to make it, have a little fun with it with their children, that is fine as well. Just some ending thoughts on the PowerPoint. You know, we may start the year using this plan. We may not. This may change in a week if the governor comes out with some different order. Right now, this is the plan we're going with. We may be three days in a school and have to switch to a different plan, so we understand that. So as a parent or a guardian, we encourage you to start thinking about childcare if we will be completely online. Childcare if we would go two days a week and three days out. Right now, it's either 100% in or 100% out, but please keep in mind, start planning because things change very quickly with this. We want you to be prepared. We're preparing, and if we both do that, we'll have a seamless transition as we move in and out of different phases depending on the governor's orders. I do see a lot of questions coming in, and we will get to those in a few minutes. I just want to say, understand that there are some of these decisions that we've made, we've put a lot of time in, in making these decisions, and some of them, there is no 100% correct answer. We feel confident that what we have in place is the best for our students and families. Our philosophy in going with either 100% in-person instruction or 100% online instruction was to give the family some authority and control and power over a situation to decide what is best for your individual child or your family. We don't want to force people to say that you have to come in two days a week and be off three, and, you know, it's Monday and Tuesday, and it's a Wednesday and Thursday, so we wanted to make sure that families had that option. We certainly want to make sure that you're comfortable and that we're doing everything we can to get your children back to some sort of normal. We want to see them being able to socialize, but we do understand if you're not comfortable sending them, that is your choice, and we will work hard to provide virtual instruction to meet your needs as well. So, just a couple reminders. Please don't forget to complete the survey by August 3rd. There is a link there, and I believe it's on the website. And just remember, we are here to help you. We are in this together. We've been doing this since, you know, April, May, June, it's been four months. We're going to continue to work hard. We're going to continue to plan for the unknown, and we're all going to have to start becoming more comfortable being uncomfortable. And, but at the end of the day, we'll do what's in the best interest of our students, and we can assure you of that. That being said, if you have further questions, you can always email me. You can email Mrs. Glazek, who's our supervisor of special education, our middle high school administrators, Principal Hockenbrock, Dean of Students, Mr. Hyansky, and at the elementary level, Mr. Kiefer and Mr. Carnuccio. Please feel free to reach out to them. There's their email addresses. Again, this document will be on our website, and what I'm going to do now is, I'm going to pull up my questions, and it's a document. Just bear with me a minute here. Get my tech support here. And there we go. Okay, I have up here a document. It's, a lot of it is cut and paste right from PDE website. It's 20 pages long. I'm not going to read every single question. I will address every question. This document will be on the website for you to review, and if you have any questions, again, if you don't get a chance to read this tonight, and you read it tomorrow, and you still have further questions, don't hesitate to email me with those questions. These questions are basically the various questions that families and parents emailed me over the last three or four days. I put them together. Some more came in later this afternoon, which are not part of this document, so I will make sure that I address them, and I see a lot of comments on the YouTube site here, so we'll get through those and scroll through them. So just bear with us here. So, first question is, when will students have their temperature checked? I think I mentioned this earlier. Parents and guardians will do that at home each morning. If they have symptoms, don't send them to school, please. Don't put them on a bus. Will students have to wear face masks? Yes. I copied and pasted the entire language from the PDE website, and basically, unless they have documentation through a 504 plan, they have to wear a mask. And I have a lot of language here. It's probably two or three pages worth. I'll just scroll through that. You can read through that. The next question is, are there special requirements when it comes to the type or material of the mask? Right below this, again, cut and paste right from the PDE website. As long as it is secured ahead with tie straps or loops over the ears or is wrapped around the lower face. It can be made of a variety of synthetic or natural fabrics, including cotton, silk, or linen, and can be a plastic face shield. That's a question later on here. It can be a plastic face shield that covers the nose and mouth. So there's more information there. Next one, can masks have patterns or designs? Yes, as long as they're school-appropriate and do not cause an educational distraction. Will we be providing face masks? Yes, we purchased one washable face covering for each student. Again, we do expect parents to have them. I'm sure you do have them already for your children. If you go to the store, you're supposed to have those on. What if my student cannot wear a face mask? Again, this is right from the PDE website. Unless you have a medical or mental health condition or disability documented in accordance with Section 504, that precludes the wearing of a face covering in school. Is a face shield acceptable? Yes, that's the next question. If you lose your mask in school during the day, the district will find one for you for that day, so don't worry about that. I do envision a lot of the younger kids maybe misplacing them. What kind of measures are taken to keep students safe in classrooms and on the bus? Basically, this is the information that I just went over on the PowerPoint presentation, and I, again, I'm not going to read those word for word. I'm just going to keep scrolling here. And yes, this will be posted for everybody. Are there special precautions for special education students with higher risk? Absolutely. Mrs. Glazek's in the room with her tonight, with us here tonight, and we talked earlier this week and for the last several months, and if you have questions and concerns, contact Mrs. Glazek. I did have her email posted at the end of, on the last slide of the PowerPoint, so, but yes, there will be special precautions when necessary. Will the district be purchasing air purifiers with HEPA air filters large enough for each and every single space students and faculty will be throughout the day? We have not purchased HEPA air filters. We do have air filters on our air handling system, and we will be increasing because we do have the capability to increase the amount of circulated outdoor air when possible. How is lunch going to be held? Classroom versus lunchroom? I did go over that before on the PowerPoint, and I basically cut and pasted that information from the PowerPoint on here. Somebody had asked if they're eating in the classroom, will the meals be hot? Yes, food will be as normal. If it's a hot meal, it'll be hot, and if it's not, it won't be. So it won't be necessary. I did have, somebody asked about, will we provide microwave for kids if they bring their own lunches in? The answer would be no to that because the lunches won't change as far as whether or not they're hot, and we don't do that during a regular school year. Will the dress code be relaxed this year? Yes, again, I went over that a little bit. Basically, we'll be doing spirit days for tops. Bottoms are still dress code appropriate, and when things go back to normal, the full dress code will go back in. And when things go back to normal, uh, the full dress code will go back into place. Will students be required to use a clear mesh backpack? You won't be required, but if you have it, you can carry it with you and that will reduce amount of students using their lockers. How will the desks be arranged in classrooms? Will there be plastic clear dividers to make cubicles? Desks will be spaced out to allow for social distancing as much as possible. Desk will be facing in one direction, so we will not have face-to-face seating. And we do not have dividers to make cubicles. If numbers stay true to where they're at now with the 70-30 split, uh, my, my principals have indicated that there will be enough room to socially distance if a third, uh, 30 to 40% are staying at home online. And right now, that's where our numbers are at. Will there be hand washing breaks throughout the day? Yes, I have that information listed there. I did go over that in the PowerPoint. Can students have hand sanitizer at their desks? Absolutely. Can classes be held outdoors or lunch? Absolutely. In fact, we'll encourage it. How will dismissal be handled? The principals will have to come up with a little bit of a staggered schedule, just maybe five minutes. Some of the groups will dismiss ahead of the other groups. And that will allow students ample time to get to their lockers and get out of the buildings. Will the VOTEC be open for students in grades 10 through 12? And if so, can they do virtual online for their academics and still attend the VOTEC? Yes and yes. What safety measures will be taken at the VOTEC? Dr. Catino, I spoke to him yesterday. He will be releasing information on this in the near future. They do have a plan in place. They were just waiting for the homeschools to release their plans. What if my child was enrolled in Edgessir at Shamokin area and they want to enroll in this online Google Classroom live option? Contact your child's principal's office. We will make sure that we get you enrolled. What are the requirements for handing in work if my child attends virtually? You can do this via Google Classroom. You can also take a picture of your work and email it to your child's teacher. I believe many of you figured that out during the springtime when we went to, uh, review and plan instruction. Are there concerns of background disturbances interrupting teaching while a student is connected virtually? No, because teachers will have the capability to mute students using Google Classroom. If the state mandates all schools to close again and students have to attend virtually, will the students who are already attending online have advantage? The answer to that is no. Students will not have an unfair advantage over anybody else. Our plan is to be seamless in case of a shutdown. Somebody suggested only teaching the basic classes, math, science, English and social studies and not the electives. All courses must be taught. Graduation requirements are dependent on it. Some people asked about splitting students into two groups, seven days in, seven days out. I did address that earlier. We wanted to put, uh, the control into the individual family's hands and allow you to choose what's best for you as an individual family. How are we going to handle those who continue to travel out of the area for vacations? Known as hotspots. There's some guidance. It is not mandated that they quarantine. It is recommended. And I have some information there. It's cut and pasted. It's recommended, but not required. Basically, those people, if they would come back, whether it's a student or staff member, they would have to, like everybody else, when you're not socially distanced, wear a mask and monitor your symptoms. And then next question is the same thing about taking vacations during the school year. What happens if a student tests positive? Will parents be made aware? Will all students be tested and or quarantined? I think I mentioned this earlier. First phone call we make is the Department of Health, Pennsylvania Department of Health. They will walk us through step by step. And what that looks like today could change in three or four weeks. So the answer to that is we contacted the Department of Health. We do everything we are told to do. They walk us through the process. And we notify the people we're supposed to notify and of course, maintain confidentiality. As far as returning, I have some information there as well. And that was on the PowerPoint, I believe. What's the criteria for not sending a student to school? Again, I copied and pasted this right from the site. If you are in group A and you have one or more symptoms in group A, stay home. If you have two or more symptoms in group B, stay home. Will students be moving from class to class? Elementary will be self-contained. Middle school, we decided to group the kids together in middle school. They will be grouped, so they'll be with the same 24 to 26 kids. But those students will move from class to class as a cohort. And high school, of course, will move from class to class. There's no other way around that. There's too much diversity with, uh, high school student schedules. What happens if we go yellow? That was another question. We will follow the orders of the governor. That's what we will do. What's the expectations for high school gym classes? If you're doing the virtual option? Same as we did in the spring. Our phys ed teachers will develop lessons that are geared to both in-person and online students. And our, our phys ed teachers actually did a really nice job with that in the springtime. If your children are doing the home virtual op, at-home virtual option and you lose internet, what will happen? Well, we, depending on how long that's for, teachers will have video lessons posted that you can view after hours in case you can't get back on live. And if you're having further trouble, contact our school district and we will see what we can do to help, if anything. How will the mask and social distancing requirement be enforced? Students not in compliance will be addressed by the faculty, the staff or administration. During the passing of classes, faculty will be standing in the hallways to monitor and supervise the students as they move through the buildings. If a student is non-compliant, the administration can require the student to start participating online instead of in-person. If you're doing the virtual option, how will you turn in work for higher level math classes like calculus? And how will you take tests because you're unable to show your work on GoFormative and Google Forms? Example, in a calculus class, I would suggest you write your answers on a sheet of paper, which is in front of you. You snap a picture and email it to your teacher. Will there be any orientation nights? Students going to kindergarten or seventh grade and don't know their way around the school? I believe our teachers are going to be doing virtual orientations. And I'm getting head nods from our principals on that. So, uh, our teachers will be doing that. It's not the same, but it will, it's the best we can do at this point in time. If school ends up getting shut down again, what will that look like? Will it be graded or pass fail? Will there be any curves for the parents that will still have to work and then come home and do schooling with their children? That's why we're offering the live synchronous and asynchronous option for all students. If we get shut down and everyone's online and you're a working parent, both parents are working and the child is being cared for by a grandparent or a daycare where they don't have the capability to get online and be live, the lessons will be uploaded to Google Classroom and then you could work what we call offline or off-hours asynchronously. If we decide to send our child back to school, will they be seen on the virtual op? I'm sorry here. If we decide to send our children back to school, will they be seen on the virtual option when the teacher is trying to teach? That's a great question. If your child comes to school physically, they will only be seen by the teacher. The people who are online, I'll just give you an example. In a traditional classroom, if the 20 student desks are traditionally lined up in, you know, there's 24 desks and there's, you know, six rows of four seats or four rows of six seats. The teacher's desk will be in the front of the room. Those students will be facing the front of the room. The teacher can set up their Chromebook, which has the camera on their desk, facing the front of the room. The students in class will be behind that computer. So they won't be able to see the people on the computer. The people on the computer will only be able to see the teacher and the designated work area where the teacher is modeling the lesson. So we don't have to worry that if your child's in school, that somebody who's at home can see your child, what he's doing in class. And the students in the classroom won't be able to see this child at home and see what he's doing at home. And that is the last question I have on the handout. This handout will be posted on our website. I do have another question that came in late and then I'll get to the ones online. This question came in late. It said, how do you plan on handling inappropriate parent behavior towards teachers when they don't like how the teacher presents a lesson, a lesson on live stream learning? Well, one of the nice things about Google Me is as soon as somebody is doing something on there or gets loud or something said inappropriate, it's a simple mute. Or you can remove them from the class immediately with one click of the button. So in theory, teachers will be in front of the classroom most of the time, well, all of the time when they're doing their actual direct instruction. And they'll be within an arm's length of the computer. So in case something happens in the home, they can just hit mute or they can remove the child from the class. So that answers all the questions that came in prior to tonight's session. So I am going to take a few minutes and let people, uh, put their questions in. I'm going to read through some of these. So if we want to take like a three-minute pause here and then we'll, uh, we'll get in, get back on here in about three minutes. We'll be right back. Thank you. Okay, everybody. Thank you for the three-minute break. We're back on here. We are going to start going through the questions that were posted on YouTube. And then some of the questions, all the questions that came through on email, we'll go through that as well. And at the end, I'd like to maybe just simulate a typical lesson, uh, just to kind of give you a sense of what that will look like as we, uh, wrap up tonight. So we're going to start, we'll start reading the questions aloud that were on YouTube and we will do our best to answer them. So we'll begin.
Okay. When wearing a mask, do they only have to wear them when not being able to social distance?
Great question. When wearing a mask, do they only have to wear them when they're not social distance? Correct. Right from the PDE website. Students sitting at desks that are six feet apart do not have to have the mask on. So if you're not social distance, you must wear the mask.
Will there be any use of Plexiglas barriers that students will be using?
Not in the classrooms with the desks. As I said earlier, we're looking at right now between 30 and 32% of students staying online, which if you run the numbers, puts us in a good position to do social distancing in all the classrooms. So we feel pretty confident about that at this point. That would allow students to not have the masks on and you wouldn't need to have the barriers. But no, we don't have the, uh, the barriers. We will have them in the offices and the cafeteria and for our students, uh, like with speech, uh, speech therapy and things of that nature.
When a teacher is absent, how are we going to handle spreading the kids out and not have cross-contamination?
Is this an elementary question or?
Uh, I believe it probably is an elementary question.
Okay, so when we have a teacher out, of course, we try to have a sub in there to replace the teacher. That will be on a case-by-case basis, whether or not we split the students or eliminate a special and utilize other staff to monitor that classroom. But I think as a last resort, we will have to, uh, spread, spread the students among the other classes. But that'll be a last resort. And I know Mr. Kiefer, Mr. Carnuccio will also be able to pitch in with covering classes.
With so many lunches at the elementary now, what would be a rough time when kids are going to start and end eating lunches?
First lunch in the elementary will start at 10:00 AM. Last lunch will start at 1:00 PM. I know that sounds a little bit long as far as times, but by doing that, we have run seven lunches, one for each grade level. That allows each grade level to be on both sides of cafeteria, socially distanced. Students who eat the late lunch, we will have a, well, they will be able to have snack time in the morning. And students who eat the early lunch will be able to have snack time in the afternoon.
Will start and end times of school change at all?
Not at this point in time.
How are you going to ensure the privacy of students when live streaming?
Again, with the live streaming, uh, you can see me here. I have my computer up if I'm the teacher and my class is back there. Those are the students physically in the room. On the computer screen are the students who are live streamed into the Google Classroom, into this classroom. The students back there cannot see who's on the computer. The students on the computer cannot see who's back there. Everyone can only see the person in front of them in the classroom. And of course, they can't see who's on the computer. And if I'm the teacher and I'm standing up here teaching, there's no way that anyone's going to see who's on that computer.
Does live stream classes ever become public record?
Does live stream classes ever become public record? I would think that that would be a, a record. However, there would be an exemption under privacy, but that would be more of a legal question. But it, I, no one would be entitled to see students from a student privacy aspect.
If the camera's stationary, how are teachers and students? If the camera's stationary, how are teachers and students to move around without being on live-stream? For example, if a student comes up to the teacher who is being recorded?
Great question. The way we teach has to change. If it doesn't, we can't do this. And the only way to do this is to change the way we do things. Teachers, when they're teaching their lesson, if it's a 13-, 14-minute lesson on Pythagorean theorem, or on phonemic awareness, the teacher will teach the lesson in front of the computer. Oh, okay. Let me just cut this down. And when the teacher's teaching, they'll teach their 10-, 15-minute lesson, and then, when they're done, they can walk around the room, hit mute, tell the students, "I'm going to walk around the room, help the other students, and if you need me, I'll check back in." So essentially, the teacher is going to treat the computer as if it's a student in their classroom. So teachers will have to, when they're actually doing the direct instruction, will have to be in front of the computer. But when their lesson's done, they'll be able to mute, or not mute, and walk throughout the room to give individualized instruction.
Will we still be having fire drills, and are there any concerns with fire safety with everything?
That's a great question. That is on our list. We're waiting for more, further guidance from EMA.
What if a student does not want to be in a class where it's live-streamed?
That's why they have the option to stay home and do the online. And that's kind of the beauty of this plan. If that's something a parent doesn't feel comfortable with, they have the option to keep their child at home.
How will subs teach online if, obviously, there are substitute teachers in that classroom for the day?
One of the things that our teachers have done forever is provide lesson plans at least three days in advance. We also require teachers to have emergency plans. And knowing the job that our teachers have done, they're really good about making sure that, when they're going to be off work, they put all the plans and preparations in place to give our students the best education possible. And the nice thing about this is, if they're at home, they can upload everything to Google Classroom. So in theory, if a teacher would be off sick, they could do their lesson and have it videotaped, and essentially, the substitute would just facilitate and not actually do the direct instruction. So, it lends itself nicely to those situations.
Please clarify the spirit days as far as color and type of information that can be on the shirt.
Bottoms are dress code appropriate. So we follow the dress code for bottoms. Tops will be purple and/or white top only, or it could be a shmooken area top, any color. What's on there, as long as it's shmooken area? If it's a purple top that has something on it that says Nike, that is permissible as well, just as long as it's not inappropriate for school.
How do we guarantee students didn't cheat at home where they actually took the test?
Well, we would encourage teachers to do time tests. Secondly, we did this in the springtime, and there were no issues, to my knowledge. And third, we will be looking and researching different resources for our teachers to help with that process. Obviously, students take online classes. They've been doing it for years. And I guess there's no 100% guarantee with anything, but it's not like this is something new. This has been standard practice in colleges and, to be honest, other high schools, you know, for a long time.
Why is it that we're taking temperatures before practices, but no one is taking temperatures at the school before the parent or student's in it?
That is the responsibility of the parent. There's some of the guidance that I have, and I don't have it right here. I actually recommend you don't do it at the school for various reasons. And we're just following that, and I, I'll see if I have that here. I believe it's on the Public Health Guidance on the PDE website. I believe it mentions that. But I could find that. But that's basically a parent responsibility when they come to the building, before they come to the building.
What happens if something does happen during live-streaming?
I'm not sure what that question means exactly, but if they mean like something happens inappropriately, someone who's on the computer, something happens in their home, and there's lots of noise or inappropriate things being said, the teacher has the capability, as long as they're in front of their computer when they're teaching, remove the student from the class or mute the student.
If a student wants to wear a clear shield, do they also have to have a mask?
No, a face shield is permissible, and I did have that on the PowerPoint.
How do we protect special-needs children so they are not identified during online learning?
Again, I don't think, I think that's not only for special-needs students. I think that's for all students. And I just explained that with the computer, you're not going to be able to see. The computer's going to be in the front of the classroom, so they won't be able to see the children in the classroom.
Students that would be attending the annex this year, where will they be now?
The classrooms predominantly are on the basement floor of the elementary school. And I believe there's a couple first-grade classrooms, two of them on the first floor, right adjacent to the principal's office. Our pre-K will also be at the Current Technology Center as well.
Do we still need a clear or mesh bookbag?
You don't need one, but if you have one, you can carry it with you at all times, and that would limit the locker usage. Elementary as well. Oh, at the elementary, yes. You do need to have one, just as always. At the high school, that would be something new, and that would be to help with alleviating congestion in the locker areas.
When are the surveys due?
August 3rd, Monday.
What about if the child has to take medicine at school?
That would be something that the parents should contact the nurse's office, and they will work out a plan for that.
When are orientations going to be held?
Orientations, the teachers are going to do a virtual orientation, and the principals will get information out on when those videos will be available.
Are we offering any tours to students that are new to the district?
If a student is brand-new to the district, student transferring in from out of town to eighth grade, if you contact their principal's office, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to work with you in making you feel as comfortable and acclimating to the building.
If a child would not feel well in the morning prior to school, can they log in from home to cover the material for that day?
Absolutely.
This is for homeschoolers. Will the attendance be taken during the live instruction, or will the student have to sign in?
I believe we'll do something in homeroom before the day begins, before first period begins, and that's when attendance will be taken. And of course, the teachers will be monitoring attendance throughout the day each period.
If a student would miss a day of school for an appointment or being sick, can they do the work from home?
Yes, absolutely.
What if we do online schooling but also attend the Vo-Tec?
You can do both.
Are we able to have parties or bring in food for parties?
No, not at this time.
May children carry hand sanitizer with them all day?
Yes.
How will you be able to reinforce that students are listening when you're not able to watch each student constantly? I imagine this refers to online students.
Well, I actually think, if you think about the computer that's here as a student sitting at a desk, and you're done teaching your lesson, and you hit mute, and let's say you're teaching a math lesson, and you're walking around as the students are working independently on some problems. It would be no different. You walk around, now the student is, you're behind the student. So if it was a student on a computer or a student in class, you wouldn't be able to see if they're talking or paying attention any differently. So the mindset's got to change a little bit. The computer is almost like a person sitting there, and you treat them just like a student who's physically in your room. When you walk around throughout the classroom, you also check on the computer and pop around to see if there's any questions or help needed.
Is there still going to be art, music, and physical education?
Yes.
What happens if we do not have the internet and a child stays home? Can I pick up packets?
If a child stays home and you do not have internet, you, a couple of things. If you wanted to, and you had a Chromebook, you could drive out to the school. Instead of picking up a packet, you could download the things from our Wi-Fi onto your Chromebook, and then finish them at home. That would be an option. But we'll certainly work with families with whatever makes their life easier. But we're not going to get into the practice of making packets. That's why we went out and purchased the Chromebooks for everybody.
Are teachers going to be able to move around the room to see student progress while also being live-streamed? And what implications will that have on the online students as the teacher moves away?
Again, I think I just answered that. It'd be very similar to whether or not you walk around the room, pop in, check the computer, just like if it was a student.
What do we need to do to enroll in the virtual option? And how will the virtual students receive their printed materials, such as books, worksheets, worksheets?
That's a great question. If you fill out the survey and you sign up for the online, that will get you enrolled with the online. We'll have a day where we distribute Chromebooks and their books, and our building principals have already been working on that schedule.
He feels all the school's internet can handle all teachers live-streaming at the same time?
We've had that conversation with our Director of Technology, and he feels pretty confident in that. However, some things you don't know until you try them, and he has contingency plans in place, so it's something that we can't guarantee, but I'm pretty confident in our tech director and the resources he has, and the fact that he's already been working on it with different vendors, so.
What about water bottles or water fountains?
No water fountains. They will be shut down. Students can't have water bottles.
Will they be able to keep them on their desk?
Yes.
How can parents see if their child participated for class within a 24-hour period?
How can they?
I'm imagining that's a student that's online. How could a parent see that they actually logged in and did the work?
Well, they could have their child show them that they did, or, you know, like, it's uploaded in Google Classroom. There'd be a record of it if they got into their child's Google Classroom account, or they could email the teacher to see if they did the work. Right.
And along the same lines, how will a parent know what is assigned and what homework is due?
Same thing, Google Classroom.
Are they, are you going to allow people that do not have internet to turn in paper packets?
If they don't have internet, they need to contact us. We have some options for them. One of them would be utilizing the Wi-Fi here at the school.
When do the students who are starting to go to the Vo-Tec this year start, since they start before all other students in past years?
Not this year. I believe the Vo-Tec starts maybe a day or two before us, but I don't have their calendar in front of me, but I know it's not two weeks like it has been in the past since we moved up our start date to Monday, August 24th.
I'm not sure if this question has to do with the Vo-Tec or our wood shop. It says if a child is enrolled in woodworking, how would it be done virtually?
And that's where the creativity comes out. During the spring shutdown, Vo-Tec schools in particular had to come up with alternate plans, and there's a lot of resources out there with the internet, and our teachers have those at their fingertips. So, obviously, it's not going to be the same as being in a woodshop, doing woodworking, but I'm sure our, if they're referring to our school, Mr. Lesher will do a great job with coming up with lessons that are valuable. And I know the Vo-Tec, they were able to conduct school in the springtime as well. So, that's something that's not unique to us.
Will metal detectors still be used?
Yes.
And several more questions here at the end pertaining to the Spirit Day dress codes. To just clarify it one more time, I believe the online questions think there's a difference between what's going on at the high school and the elementary. Or can they wear jeans?
No jeans. It's the bottoms for the regular dress code, and the top will be purple and/or white top, or a shmooken area top, any color. School-appropriate, of course, without any profane messages on there.
With teachers teaching outside, will there be increased security to protect the kids and the teachers?
Well, if a teacher does want to go outside, they will have to notify the principal and let them know so they can make arrangements, and they would then notify security. And that's one thing I do want to say. A lot of the things that we are doing are new to us, but the one thing we can't lose sight of is the safety of the students and our security. So we want to make sure that we continue to do the metal detectors and keep our students safe, not from, just from COVID, but from a security standpoint.
If children receive documentation that they aren't able to use a face mask, will those children be segregated from their peers? Will they not be able to participate in activities with other students?
Again, they have to wear a face mask or a face covering unless they have basically a 504 plan. So no, they won't be segregated.
What if a child has to take medicine at the high school?
If a child has to take medicine, of course, they would work that out with the nurse and the parents.
Are teachers going to be required to stay stationary while teaching in front of the camera? This question, the person wants their teacher to be actively moving around the room.
And they absolutely will be. They'll have to get used to teaching the lesson in front of the camera. That's basically what we have to do. But then, when they're done the lesson, and I would think everybody would agree that it's not good practice for a teacher in any setting to stand in front of the room for 42 minutes lecturing. So, again, I'll go back to an example. The history teacher doing a PowerPoint lesson on, you know, some historical event, and they present the lesson in front of the class, and then, as they get into the conversations, the teacher will have the capability to walk around. But as they're doing the direct instruction, it's got to be in front of the computer, and then, of course, they would move around the room and give feedback to the students.
Do we need to, as parents, document our child's temperatures and send that documentation to the school to verify our children have no temperature?
No, that is not required.
Are neck gaiters acceptable?
That qualifies as a face covering.
Will IEPs be honored with the virtual classes?
Yes.
When does school start?
Monday, August 24th.
Can you explain if there is adequate ventilation for those basement classrooms for the younger students?
In the elementary building, I'm assuming?
The basement is just as adequate ventilation as the rest of the school.
Our supervisor, Buildings and Grounds, is here this evening, and he just made comment that, yes, it's no different than it is in the rest of the building at the elementary school.
Will there still be band?
Actually, band has been practicing as an extracurricular along with many of our fall sports programs. Yes, marching band.
If we decide to send our child for one month, can we change to online the next month? And if so, how do we do that?
Absolutely. We're asking parents to commit for one month at a time. Start of school. Absolutely. We're asking parents to commit for one month at a time. Start of school to October 1, to November 1, to December 1. As we get closer to that October 1 date, we'll send something out to parents. If you want to switch, let us know. Otherwise, we'll assume that you're staying where you were at.
If my son is having a behavior issue or needs help academically, will the teacher be able to alternate attention between both the classroom and online students?
Again, it would be no different than a regular classroom. If you treat the computer in front of the room as student, and if your child needs individual attention, absolutely, they can, our teachers will be able to do that.
Last year, 12 absences were excused. Will this number increase this year?
We are in process of developing, I don't want to say a COVID attendance policy, but we are in the process of looking at some tweaks to the attendance policy due to the pandemic, and we will have our principals work on that and get that as an insert with our handbooks.
How are IEPs going to happen?
Just as they did in the springtime, we'll have meetings. We'll have IEP meetings. They'll be done virtually. Or they could be done in person. And as far as follow-up with our special education department, our teachers and staff will be communicating with the special education students who are online more frequently than anybody, like they did in the springtime.
My child only needs one, I think they mean class, does she still have to take eight periods?
That would be a guidance counselor question, but I'm sure they'll be flexible. Depends on what their graduation requirement needs are and availability of the classes that they would like to schedule.
Why do we have an option of live streaming if we have our own cyber school?
Because I think our live streaming option gives us something that the other cyber school can't. And if they're referring to Edge Annuity or Edge Isir or an outside cyber school, they're getting the best instruction from our teachers.
The students that go to school, do they have to do their work on Google Classroom or regular schoolwork?
Our plan at the beginning of the year is to start the year with our teachers instructing students through Google Classroom and teaching students how to use Google Classroom. In case we get shut down three weeks into the school year, all of our students will be prepared and ready to go out the door with their learning device, and it'll be a seamless transition. So yes, our teachers will be using Google Classroom as part of their everyday lessons.
How will we be notified of buses? How will we be notified of buses?
Bus passes will be mailed out as they have been in the past.
If a child misses some class for the day, some classes for the day, and makes it up online, will it go against truancy?
No.
In case tardiness, excused absences?
Nope, we will be flexible with that. We want to make sure students get their instruction and get their, their schoolwork done. And if they can't make a class and they're at home and for whatever reason, that's why we have the asynchronous option.
What should a parent do if they are showing symptoms?
Contact their PCP.
And what about the student then?
Well, they should monitor their child's symptoms, and if they're, they have symptoms, they shouldn't send them.
What is the recommended temperature that a student should be kept home?
I believe it's 100.4 degrees.
In elementary classes, will there be a teacher helper or more than one teacher?
In elementary classes, will there be a?
Well, there'll be, I guess, additional support. Is there going to be a teacher helper or more than one teacher in the classroom?
Classroom aides will be scheduled, or special education inclusion teachers will be scheduled as they have normally in the past.
If a teacher goes outside for a class, is it still going to be live streamed?
It can be, but if it can't be, it can be uploaded a video of the lesson to Google Classroom.
Will students be provided individually with their own computer?
If they need it, there is an option when they do the survey to fill out a Chromebook loan form. And our tech department is working on a plan for dissemination.
How will DIBELS testing and other assessments be done for virtual students?
Our building principals will be working on that. That's a, that's an excellent question, and that won't be an easy task, but we will certainly make sure that we come up with something. And I have some input here from Mrs. Kumar.
We'll also be using a lot of iReady assessments that could be done online.
Okay.
Virtual. So if we, if there's issues with DIBELS, we'll be relying more on the iReady assessments that you're asked.
Yes, and I'm not sure if everybody heard that, but if, if there's an issue with the DIBELS, which basically monitors their reading levels, we could use iReady. And I believe that's the five critical components of reading instruction are assessed in that, the phonemic awareness, the phonics, the fluency, the vocabulary comprehension.
Are students still going to be doing AR points?
No.
When will we be notified about Chromebooks to pick them up?
In the very near future. First thing is October, October, August 3rd. Let's look at the survey, what the results are, and then go from there.
If desks are going to be six feet apart, does that mean students will not have to wear masks during classroom?
That is correct.
Will classroom rosters be posted for middle school, high school, elementary school?
Yes. And online.
Will students be able to go to band classes in elementary?
We still have music in elementary school. Yes.
That's all that's on there this important summer. The last couple trickled in at the end, so.
Okay, that is all the YouTube questions. I do have a couple of questions that came through email. I'm going to pull those up. Just bear with me, please. I got some, several questions here. Will the school put a guarantee if their child, if a child goes to school that they will never be filmed or recorded? I'm not sure if I can guarantee anything, but I will say that based on kind of what I've demonstrated here, that there would be nobody filming anybody's child in the classroom. Is the school asking parents to agree to not post any recorded, live-streamed videos, pictures on social media? We are developing a live-stream policy. We're working with our solicitor on that. If I decide to keep my child home, how long will the live-stream portion be? That will vary with each teacher, and, you know, you'll get a sense of that. So some teachers will, you know, the live-stream portion will be 20 minutes, someone will be 15 minutes, and then they'll kind of do the walking around and checking in with the students and those on the computer. If I decide to keep my children home, how will they participate in PE, music, art, and library? Again, just like we did in the springtime. I know art, music, PE all did it at the middle school level last year, and library can be done as well. So yes, if they're online, they will participate in those. How will my child be assessed and graded if they're at home doing the work, just like they would be if they're in the classroom? And will Nutrition, Nutrition Inc. be eliminating the fee for depositing money online? We have not had any questions.
It's my school bucks.
It's, it's my school bucks. It's not Nutrition Inc., and we haven't had any conversations about that, but no. There will be an option, though, to send money in with the homeroom teacher, and the homeroom teacher will collect all the money at once. And that way, that'll kind of mitigate some of the concerns we had about kids going to the calf track window. And I know that parent did put about the recording, and yes, we would make sure as best as we can that nobody would film their child, and I'm not sure how that would even happen in the first place. Next question. Okay, I answered that one. Will kids be allowed to wear sweatpants and or leggings? At this time, no. Dress code for bottoms. Are there going to be extracurricular sporting events? Right now, our sports, our fall sports have been practicing, and there has been no statement from PIAA or PDE about canceling fall sports. So as of right now, yes, there will be. What is the process for making the decision to attend in person or virtual? Do you send an email? You would simply fill out the survey, and we will get that information. It'll automatically be logged through the survey. Will the virtual school session day be the same length as the in-person school? Yes, it will be. That doesn't mean that they would have to be live for seven hours, but teachers will be teaching the full day, and students will have the opportunity to be online for the full day. Will the students in the middle high school be required to go through the metal detectors daily? Yes, I think I just answered that. Where, will there still be a wait with metal detectors in the morning? I think the metal detectors, I don't think there's a long wait with the metal detectors, so I don't anticipate any issues with that. Will the cell phone policy change? No. Will water bottles be available for all with no access to water fountains? Students can bring water bottles in. They're certainly able to do that. That being said, how is touching a water fountain button any different than touching a sink handle? If it just, the more we limit it, the better. So that's why we would not have the water fountains on. Are all faucets touch-free? No, that's why our Buildings and Grounds supervisor will be coming up with protocols for sanitizing high-touch areas throughout the day. Because they are not touch-free, nor are the dryers for the hands in the lavatories. Last year during the COVID beginning, every teacher appeared to have a complete lesson every day that lasted much longer than a standard classroom lesson. Will the lessons be limited? I think it'll be much better this year. Last year, everybody was online, and teachers were, were put in a tough spot to try to estimate how long lessons will be. With us doing it live, it'll be much easier for the teacher to have a handle on that. Okay, I got that. And I think I want last one. Is entering the building at the middle high school the same as last year? I believe it is. Yes, it is. That is, oh, a couple more questions here. Okay, a couple questions here. Have you considered utilizing strategically placed tents? Actually, we did have conversations about that with the lunches, and right now, we're not going to purchase any, but if it becomes an issue, especially with lunches, we're open to that for sure. And have you considered the district developing and utilizing an online screening tool for students and staff? It helps keep screening at the forefront. Screening process and potentially helps tracing in the event of, of something going on. I, I will check with our tech department. I'm not sure what that question means exactly. A web, a web-based screening for online screening tool?
Isn't that dealing with the health issues, like I'm thinking that?
Oh, they're talking about the?
Like a screen, and we're looking at?
We are looking at something with an app for elementary students and elementary and intermediate students, and we will get more information on that. I think that's what they meant. But no, we, we don't have that at this point in time, but we did, I think we secured, correct, for elementary and intermediate, right? We did?
We are, we are set.
We're set? We're supposed to get them?
Yes.
So that'll be coming. That's on backorder, though.
Yes.
Okay, I understand that question. And I think that's all the questions we got there.
Several more came in.
Couple more came in? Okay, we'll take them.
All right. Will virtual learning affect what classes students have, such as in advanced math?
No, the schedule will be the same as it always is.
Just to reiterate, will students be provided with their own computer?
If necessary, yes. Of course, we'd ask if you have to, to not, if you don't need one, then, you know, obviously, you wouldn't ask for one.
Will children in elementary have library?
Children in elementary have library? Yes.
Will elementary students' schedules be given to parents so they know which lunch period they are getting?
They will know ahead of time, and I understand that question for snacks and that sort of thing, so absolutely.
What about speech therapy classes?
They will be conducted. I believe we got face shields
Yes.
For the staff and
Dividers.
And dividers for those students.
And they can also be provided virtually for those kids that are virtual.
And that could be done virtually as well.
I think there was some confusion with the explanation of lunch. There were some listeners here that are asking, or does that mean we're paying for lunch again, or is lunch free this year? Is it just because it's à la carte in the high school?
Oh, I'm sorry about the lunch money. Okay. We are still under the CEP program, so the students will still get the free lunch, but and breakfast. But the students who want to purchase additional lunches that put money on, that's what I was referring to. So I apologize for that. We are still having the free breakfast and lunch through the CEP program. That was just for, I guess, à la carte items above and beyond the free breakfast and lunch.
Do elementary students take instrument lessons in school, such as a fifth grader?
Can they do lessons at lunch or at the elementary school? Yeah, just like they always have done, yes. Socially distanced.
Will Chromebooks be provided to students that are in person but would need to do online if they stay home for a school day? So I guess maybe if you know you're going to be absent, we're maybe going to?
If you know ahead of time they're going to be absent, we can make arrangements. But if it's, I'll give you an example. If, if you're sick, if you go home and you don't have a Chromebook because you didn't take a Chromebook home, you know, we kept it here, and you went home, and then the next day you were sick, if you have a, you don't have to have the Chromebook, you don't have to do the live. You could wait and get on the asynchronous portion to view the video. So it could work both ways.
I know it was stated that there's no snacks or parties. However, can cases of water be donated to our child's classroom for all children?
That would be wonderful. Absolutely, yes. Thank you, whoever asked that question.
And there are allowed snacks.
Does calf track monies carry over from year to year?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we considering increasing armed guards because of outside learning taking place?
Not at this time. Okay, I got a couple more emails, and then we'll, we'll wrap this up. Somebody asked about, they still have to buy school clothes. You would still have to buy bottoms, and yes, I guess in theory, if we didn't come back to school, yes, you would have to. Do you have to complete a survey for each? Yes, if you have three children in your home, you have to do the survey three times. Great question. Okay. Will students still be allowed to go à la carte for lunch? Yes. If a student has a symptom and keeps them home, will that count as one of the 13 absences they are allowed in a school year? As of right now, yes, but we are in the process of developing a, a modified attendance policy due to COVID. Okay, I think that was it. That's the last one. We got to close the questions off. At this time, I do want to real quick do a simulation with the computer and how that would work with the class. Again, I'm just going to get up real quick. If this is the students online, I have my class physically in the room back there. If I'm teaching, I'm live right now. I'm in front of the room. I'm within arm's shot of the computer. I'm live. I'm doing a lesson on the board. Student has a question. They can ask a question. Student has a question, they can ask a question. A student on a computer can ask a question. If somebody in the room acts up, I can mute. Okay? Or I could shut this off, deal with the problem so people at home don't have to hear that. If someone on a computer is acting up, I can mute. I can remove from the class, so people in the classroom won't hear that. The people in the classroom can't see who's on a computer. The people on the computer can't see who's in the classroom. So we're not worried about any videotaping. I'm doing my lesson, I'm live. Okay? If the teacher would like to video that live, they could stop the video and then they could upload that later on during their planning period for asynchronous learning. If a teacher doesn't feel comfortable doing it live, filming at the same time, they could tape themselves during their planning period and upload that for asynchronous learning. I'm done my lesson, I want to walk around the room, I'm giving some independent practice. I walk throughout the room, I tell the students online, I'm going to go through the room, work independently, I'll be back in a minute, just like you would tell the students in a room. I walk through the classroom, I check in with students, I give feedback, I let them do some more independent practice, I pop back up here, check the computer. Do you need any help? Students can chat. Or if I don't have it on mute, can talk to me. I could walk them through it, I could show them it. I can mute it, I can go back there. I could tell them, we're going to do the last ten minutes of class, we're going to be working independently on homework. I'm going to mute you, if you want to get off, you can get off. Walk around the room, kids are doing their work, nobody has any questions, nobody has any questions there. They could turn their computer off and wait for the next class to start. So that's kind of how I envision it. At the elementary level, teachers will have designated times. Nine o'clock, we're working on math. They might do a twenty-minute lesson on something in fractions. Same situation. Then at ten o'clock, they're doing ELA. They can go through their lesson, same as at the middle high school. So that's kind of how we see it and envision it. I just want to say I appreciate everybody that logged on here. We have two hundred and seventy-six people, two hundred and seventy-seven people watching, which is phenomenal. I do want to thank our administrators. Mrs. Glazek is here, Mr. Petrovich, Mr. Hockenbrock, Mrs. Kamara, Mr. Kiefer, Mr. Carnuccio, Mr. Anderson, Mrs. Colangelo. I know some of our administrators are available by phone. Mr. Hynowski and Mrs. Eichelberger. We have two school board members here, Mrs. Scandal and Mr. Persing. I want to thank all the parents for getting on. I did have Mr. Anderson. I did announce Mr. Anderson. But I also just want to thank you, the parents and families, for getting on here. And a lot of great questions, questions that we couldn't even think about. And you brought them to our attention, and I think that's great. People are concerned, you should be. It's great that you're concerned, it's great that you are involved with your child's education and you want to know what's going on and you want to make the best decision possible. That's why we went with the plan that we have, to give you the flexibility to choose what's best for your child. If you have further questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. You can email me. Please fill out that survey by August third. Pray for the best. We're in this together. And if anybody in the admin room here has any questions, if not, we will sign off. Again, survey's due Monday, August third. First day of schools, Monday, August twenty-fourth. The PowerPoint, the question sheet will be posted on the website. I don't think I missed anything else. We will pump out more information through Blackboard Connect phone call-out system. Check the Facebook pages, check the website frequently. Everybody stay safe, thank you for logging on, and have a good night.